And that's all I have tonight, and we'll move on very quickly to our superintendent's honor roll. Dr. Pilch, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, sir. We have a lot of folks to honor tonight, and I could include a lot of these in my honor roll. I'm going to focus my honor roll tonight on the Betcher Scholars and the Daniels Fund winners. And so, I'm really excited to bring these students forward tonight and talk a little bit about Daniels and Betchers both. So I first want to just talk a little bit about the Daniels Scholarship. This really is a multi-state honor when one of our students or some of our students receive this honor and this scholarship here. This honor is focused on strength of character, leadership potential, commitment to serving the community, academic performance and promise, the well-rounded personality of the scholar, and emotional maturity and stability. Scholars are also selected on their values that were important to the founder. The founder was Bill Daniels, and those values include ethics and integrity, honesty, respect for people, loyalty, reliability, an entrepreneurial spirit, patriotism, dedication to the community, commitment to excellence, and etiquette. Daniels Scholars who attend a partner school are within a four-state region, Colorado, New Mexico, Utah, and Wyoming, and they have the full cost of their attendance covered at their college of their choice. In addition to a new laptop computer, they participate in leadership development opportunities, they're involved in community opportunities and career advancement opportunities. And this year, District Six is proud to honor one of our own students as a recipient of the Daniels Scholarship. And I would like to ask for our senior at Early College Academy, Israel Vargas, to please join me at the podium. I've asked Israel to say a few words about his experiences and his plans if you would. So I'll let you take the microphone, sir.
Hi, good evening, hi Board of Education. Yeah, so the, I guess the road to getting here was, it was kind of, it was very tedious, I would say, especially with the applicants opening in like September. And then I didn't know that there's a set SAT requirement and, let's just say, I had to retake it a few times to get what I needed. I almost didn't until my school nurse talked me into it. I was gonna go visit a college, but then she's like, no, go take the SAT, we'll do better. And I actually scored way higher the next time, I guess. Let's see, and like the week before, I know, I was really nervous, especially to go sit in front of the interview committee. And so, I want to thank, she's not here tonight, but her name's Dr. Rosa Law. She's our Ames Community College Director at Early College Academy. And the entire week before, we spent hours just prepping, asking questions, how I should talk, just stuff like that. And it helped a lot, just being prepared. And then I would also thank the Greeley Dream Team for setting up the mock interviews as well. That also helped, especially with the giant committees that they had, helped lower the nervousness. After high school, especially with this opportunity that I was given, I planned to attend either University of Denver or Colorado State University focusing on exercise science with a pre-medicine concentration, hopefully to go to medical school and be like our board member, Dr. Brenda Campos Spitsy. She's a role model for me, and so, yeah, hopefully that's where I go after high school. And I thank everybody who supported me, especially my parents, who they are sitting right here in the front. Couldn't have done it without them. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Israel. We're so proud of you, and we can't wait to hear about you going to med school. So next, I'd like to recognize our two Betcher Foundation Scholarship winners. And we're so honored to have two very fine students who were selected for the Betcher. And you all know a lot about the Betcher, you know how rigorous it is, similar to the Daniels in that some parents advise their students to not go for the Betcher. They say to their children, don't do that, it's too hard, it's too much work, you'll never get it. But these two students did go for the Betcher. I want to just read to you a little bit about the Betcher Scholarship, and you all know both of these students and had an opportunity to interact with them on different occasions. But since 1952, the Betcher Scholarship Program has existed in Colorado to keep Colorado's most talented students here in state for their post-secondary years. Scholars are selected based on academics, service, leadership, and character. In addition to receiving an $80,000 scholarship award across the four years, scholarships or scholars also receive institutional merit and/or need-based age from their respective college campuses. As a comprehensive scholarship, the Betcher Award also includes programming and support to ensure that scholars reach their full academic and leadership potential. This year, District Six is proud to have two of our students as the recipients of the Betcher Foundation Scholarship. Please join me in welcoming and congratulating Greeley Central High School Senior Lulia Tekel and Greeley West High School Senior Aiden Dattery. And I have, I have just a little bit more to say about both of you. Both Lulia and Aiden are active members of their high schools. Lulia is student body president at Greeley Central, is a softball player, and in numerous other clubs and organizations. Aiden has been active in FFA as an officer and in state and national competitions. He has starred in theatrical productions and has been a member of other Greeley West organizations. Aiden is currently applying for a state office position in the Colorado FFA Association. If successful, he will travel the state for a year, serving as a leader in the organization. He plans to study agriculture business management at Colorado State University, and Lulia plans to pursue her love of writing by majoring in journalism and communications at the university she eventually selects. She wants to focus on giving a voice to Black writers and eventually hopes to own a publishing company.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm super honored to be here tonight. A little bit about the Betcher application specifically that sets it a little further apart from other scholarships is that it's got a huge Colorado focus. The Betcher family themselves were a Colorado family, and when they set up that foundation, they knew that that foundation was to make investments back in Colorado. And that's why I'm super fortunate to have received the scholarship personally. And really, the Colorado investment is what it means to me. I've always looked at Colorado State University growing up. Ever since kindergarten, my parents will tell you, I've wanted to study agriculture over there, and I finally decided on ag business for Colorado State. And I've always kind of bet a ram at heart, and so I knew that the Betcher application and the Betcher Scholarship would be the one for me going forward in high school. And so, really, that emphasis on Colorado itself, but also coinciding with leadership, which has meant so much to me throughout my high school and middle school years, I've really set a dedication towards becoming more involved in my school, not only in clubs and activities, but also in leading those clubs and activities. So I'm very fortunate to be here tonight in recognition and also to have received the scholarship. Thank you all so much for this opportunity.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm super honored to be here tonight. A little bit about the Betcher application specifically that sets it a little further apart from other scholarships is that it's got a huge Colorado focus. The Betcher family themselves were a Colorado family, and when they set up that foundation, they knew that that foundation was to make investments back in Colorado. And that's why I'm super fortunate to have received the scholarship personally. And really, the Colorado investment is what it means to me. I've always looked at Colorado State University growing up. Ever since kindergarten, my parents will tell you, I've wanted to study agriculture over there, and I finally decided on ag business for Colorado State. And I've always kind of bet a ram at heart, and so I knew that the Betcher application and the Betcher Scholarship would be the one for me going forward in high school. And so, really, that emphasis on Colorado itself, but also coinciding with leadership, which has meant so much to me throughout my high school and middle school years, I've really set a dedication towards becoming more involved in my school, not only in clubs and activities, but also in leading those clubs and activities. So I'm very fortunate to be here tonight in recognition and also to have received the scholarship. Thank you all so much for this opportunity.
Hello, I'm also super grateful and honored to be here tonight. It feels very rewarding to have such an opportunity like this. Growing up as the eldest daughter of an immigrant family, it's been very, like, it's been very difficult to kind of find that path for myself and for my family and my community. But the Betcher Scholarship means so much in having that opportunity and exploring what college looks like and what's like life after college looks like, because the Betcher isn't just like a tuition check. It is so much more than that, and it's about like building that leadership that you have within yourself. And so, to be honored and rewarded like this means so much more than I think I could ever express it. And to have this opportunity for me and my family is so wonderful, and thank you. I'm so honored to be here tonight.
President Matthews, I think we'll conclude with the superintendent's honor roll there and just once again give a shout out to these fine young people and who are going to do great things in their life. And I want to say, and Lulia touched on this, this isn't just about a scholarship award when you're a Daniels Fund winner or a Betcher's Fund winner. It is about being recognized as one of the most outstanding leaders in your entire school district and in the state of Colorado. That's what these awards are about. And to have three students in District Six who have achieved this level of excellence at three different schools here in District Six is truly an honor, and I'm so proud of all of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, and congratulations again to Israel and Aiden and Lulia. We've watched you guys, and you've come to this board meeting several times, and so we know that you're outstanding students, and we're glad that the Daniels and Betcher Foundations recognize that as well. So, moving right along, we need to approve an agenda, and we'll need a motion to do that.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the motion? Sing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Zari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our all-state recognition. And so, Dr. Pilch, I think you have a few more P students to recognize.
We sure do, President Matthews. And this really is a wonderful night of celebration and recognition for our students here in District Six. It is that time of the year where we can recognize our winter, all-state winners in several areas. And I'm, I'm pleased to introduce to you Mr. Chris Klein, our District Athletic and Activity Director, who will, will lead us in this fanfare and bring up some folks from our high schools to recognize these other individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, and thank you to the board. We appreciate this honor to recognize our athletes and our activity members who've had such great success throughout the winter. We, as you can see, we have a large number of students who have worked and dedicated themselves to excellence throughout the winter season in their activities and their athletics, and has been honored either by qualifying for state or being honored by the state as a all-state representative. At this time, we'd like to recognize those students. We will do that one school at a time, bring them up, that athletic director will recognize their students, and then we will take a picture of that group and then we'll move on to the next school. Tonight, in order, we did our fall, we'll change the order up from the fall, we're gonna go first with Greeley West High School. And I'd like to bring up J.J. Barons, the Assistant Principal Athletic Director at Greeley West High School.
First off, I want to thank you guys for this time. It's always exciting to, to come up here and just kind of celebrate all the great things that our students and our athletes are doing across the district. So the first group we have is our wrestling team. We had five state qualifiers this year, three in the boys, two in the girls. And those athletes are Julian Chavez, Rajan, Tegan Betcher, Andre Ortiz, Esperanza Rios, and Natalie Salazar. We do have a few that aren't here tonight when I start talking about these, these other athletes and students. But the good news is they're multi-sport athletes or participating, participating in other activities and stuff like that. So the next group we have is our swim team. Tonight, all we have is Haley Weeks here right now, but... They did have a phenomenal season. They had ten state qualifiers. They had nine in swimming, one in dive, and I think it's been a number of years since they've had a diver qualify and stuff. So to name them off real quick, we've got Mandy Douglas, Hope Kale, Macy Ziegler, Gloria Wright, Danny Douglas, Akam Chahal, Alexa Jackson, Georgia Collins, and London Daniel. Lastly, we have DECA. Unfortunately, none were able to make it tonight. And our three DECA students that qualified for state was Aiden McPherson. Oh, okay. We have two, sorry, they are here. So those students are, so we got Aiden McPherson, who qualified top ten in financial consulting, Giselle Rivera, business finance, and lastly, Raymundo Akampo Flores, Principles of Business and Administration. Again, thank you.
Thank you, J.J., and congratulations to Greeley West. Our next group we'd like to recognize are our state placers and all-state members from Northridge High School. I'd like to recognize Jeff Collins, Athletic Director, Assistant Principal at Northridge High School.
Hi, good evening, thanks for having us. I want to just introduce a couple of students. You know, it's a busy time of the year for us and for our kids, so we had a track meet today and some of those things, so our numbers are a little low. But I want to start and introduce Leland Camacho. He qualified for the state wrestling tournament this year. Also, our girls' basketball team, they made it to the round of sixteen. They beat Palisade, which was great, and then fortunately, their season ended. I do want to call attention, though, to Sophia Carbajal. Sorry, my phone's gone away. She was named to the all-state honorable mention team as a freshman and broke our school record for rebounds in a season with two hundred and eighty... Even three? Eighty-five. I always short her to rebounds. Also, Aria Magdaleno, she is a Northridge student, but dove for Greeley West, so she qualified there. And then I just wanted to give you an update, we had ROTC here in the fall, and they placed, after you met them in the fall, nineteenth at Nationals, so congratulations to them. So, thank you.
All right, congratulations, Northridge, thank you. All right, for our last school we're recognizing tonight, I'd like to call up Jim Butterfield, Assistant Principal at Central. He will step in in place of Sean Scribbick, who had a game tonight. So Jim is here to recognize all the students from Greeley Central High School.
Thank you, Chris. I am Jim Butterfield, I'm an Assistant Principal at the Central High School. Super proud. My first thing I want to let you know about is Mackay Aluriz, he's a state champion in wrestling, he could not be here tonight. Thank you. And I'd like to have Amy Nance come up, she's been jumping out of her seat all night, she's pretty ready. She wants to introduce some kids to you, they're, did some pretty exciting things this year, so come on up here and bring your kids.
Good evening. I first want to say thank you very much for honoring my FBLA students. I know that it means a lot for them to, to be here tonight, although not all of us could be here. We do appreciate the opportunity. This has been an amazing team. I've been an FBLA advisor for five years and I'm also the DECA advisor, and I've never had an amazing team like this before, with so many of our students qualifying for the state competition. Let's see, we are missing Ramon and Tony. Okay, good turnout. What I'd like to do is go ahead and recognize the two that are here tonight for placing, not only being able to make it as state qualifiers, but for also placing in the top ten. Our president of our club, Yara Rennie, Mary Montez. And his first time ever, Nathan Kessler, placed in the top ten for coding and programming. I would like to take this special opportunity to recognize the president of our club. She would have been in FBLA and DECA her freshman year, had it not been for COVID. Her sophomore year in both DECA and FBLA, primarily FBLA, she did place in the top ten for the state of Colorado for her very first time. Her junior year, she made it to the Colorado Leadership Conference and placed fourth, allowing her then to continue and compete at the national level. For most people, placing fourth and standing on that stage and going to Nationals would be enough. For our president, it was not. So over the course of the next year, she took all of the feedback that the judges had given her, literally studied it, went over it, and for the next year, continued to, to try and make improvements, make improvements, and make improvements. So in addition to being a national qualifier for the year 2023, this year, just last week, she was our state champion and will be representing us again. So I, again, thank you very much and thank you, all of you. This is my last year at District Six, and I cannot think of a better way to have gone out than with this crew right behind me. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Another amazing piece of our career, hey guys, if you just sit around, we'll let Bill go. About our career in technical education is Bill Ochsander and Chuck Luce have a pretty exciting announcement that just occurred a couple of weeks ago as well, from our manufacturing pathway.
Good evening. Uh-oh, the podium's taller than me as usual. Good evening, thanks you so much for having us here tonight. I am fortunate to teach in the career pathway in a P-Tech program. And one of my courses, we have an energy technologies class. And we study everything in traditional, non-traditional, transportation, storage, everything about energy. In the process, we came across a project that was being run, it's called Kid Wind Challenge, they do it all over the nation. And with just a few weeks to prepare, I threw the challenge at my class and they got super excited about it. So we had the opportunity to go down to Denver to the CSU Spur Campus. Where's the kid that wants to go ag? Have you been to the Spur Building? Because the Spur Building is really cool. So we went to the competition and really to get the most out of it, you kind of had to be a fan. The boys did a fantastic job. We competed against three other high school teams, then there was a bunch of little elementary school kids that kind of destroyed our production of energy. We did not store or produce the most energy. Why don't you hold your blade up? Some of the little kids were absolutely destroying us with what they did. But they all showed up with kits and all they really made were kind of their blades, the rest of the thing was all pre-made. The boys blew the judges away. You would have been so proud of these students. They presented in front of a panel of judges and it was their engineering and their presentation that got them first place. They completely designed the entire wind turbine here, including the prop, which is called a Toradol rotor. They always say it wrong. It's called a Toradol rotor. And then we have designed and printed the entire gear housing. So it was a really impressive piece of engineering and they did just a fantastic job. The great thing is it qualified us to go to Nationals. And with the gracious support of the Success Foundation and the district, we found the funding to do that. So in May, we get to go to Minneapolis and spend four days there at the World Wind Challenge. So we're really excited, we're going to CSU this week to meet with some engineers over there to help us kind of redesign some of this and see if we can make it even better. So we're super excited, we're really honored to be here tonight, thank you all so much.
And again, thank you very much for the opportunity to bring our kids up and showcase the work they've done this, this winter, thank you.
All right, thank you to the members of the board, Dr. Pilch, for giving us this opportunity to recognize these wonderful students tonight. It is an honor to work here in District Six and to see such wonderful kids come out of our district, thank you.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate all of our students taking time out of their busy schedules to come and, and see us and be part of our meeting tonight. So next on our agenda is our superintendent's report. And Dr. Pilch, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I want to report on two candidates who you approved the hire of at our last board meeting when I was out ill. But I'd, I'd like you to have a chance to meet the two of them and, and put a name with the face. I first want to introduce to you Ms. Emily Downs, who is our new Assistant Principal at Jackson Elementary School. So Emily has a rich history with District Six. She began her career here in second grade teaching at Bella Romero Academy. And then she left us for a year and, or two and went to Steamboat and spent a little time in New Orleans and then came back to Colorado and came back to the Greeley Evans School District Six, where she again served as an elementary teacher and a CLD teacher. Most recently, she has served as our culturally linguistic diversity coordinator for elementary in the Academic Achievement Department. And like most people who've never gotten to be a building administrator, who come to the district office from the classroom, they usually want to go back to the building at some point. And so Ms. Downs wanted to go over to Jackson Elementary as Assistant Principal, and we're excited to have her do that. She has a bachelor's degree in elementary ed, she has a master's in CLD and diverse education from Adam State, and most recently finished her master's in ed leadership from Western Governors University. So welcome, Emily, we're proud to have you going to Jackson Elementary School. And, you know, I'm always excited to move people within the system to new opportunities that they're seeking. And like Emily, Elizabeth Garcia pursued another position here in District Six. She has been our Assistant Principal at Greeley Central High School, where she has done an excellent job. And she would like to dip her toe into the littler kid water. And so she's going to be going to the James Madison Steam Academy as the new Assistant Principal there. She's been the last several years at Greeley Central as an Assistant Principal. She started her career here at Northridge, teaching in family and consumer sciences. She left us for a little while and went and did some CTE work in Loveland, and then had, came back here and, and worked for us at Greeley Central. We're excited to have her going to James Madison Steam Academy with the K8 students. She has a bachelor's degree in psychology, a bachelor's degree in family and consumer sciences, sciences, both from Colorado State University, they're getting a lot of airtime tonight, aren't they? Boo. And, and she also has a master's of science degree in educational leadership as well from CSU. So welcome to your new position, Elizabeth, and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda is our I-2030 Climate and Cultural Goal One update, and that's cultural proficiency. I see a few people coming to the podium. Dr. Pilch? Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say in my way of introduction? Okay. Well, then we'll welcome Dr. Dattery.
Thank you, uh, President Matthews, Superintendent Pilch, and members of the board. It is my pleasure, uh, to present, I'm talking slowly, letting them come join me. Uh, it is my pleasure to be able to bring this, uh, strategic plan update to you on the culture and climate goal one, um, on cultural proficiency. So, uh, joining me this evening is Mr. Louis Camas. He is our director of cultural proficiency and family partnerships, as well as, uh, you can come, come on up if you'd like, yeah, and just join us. Uh, Ms. Ashley Aragon will be joining us as well and sharing. She is our principal at Bella Romero K8 Academy, and, uh, she will be sharing some information as well about how this work has impacted her at the building level and her staff and students. So just as we always do, starting out by sharing with you our mission and our vision as a district and that this work is firmly embedded in our, uh, the mission to engage every student in a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, preparing students to be college and career ready. And we know that there are many values that we uphold in our district. This particular update, we feel like really embodies these two values very well around that we believe diversity is a strength and that we promote access, opportunity, and choice. And while all four of these are focus areas in our strategic plan, this is, uh, an update to you tonight on climate and culture. Goal one, there are two goals within each of the focus areas, and tonight we will, uh, share with you on goal one, to develop cultural responsiveness throughout the organization. There are three objectives within this goal area. The first is to cultivate a strong sense of belonging and empowerment for all students and staff. The second is to provide access and support for learning opportunities, so all students will be career and college ready. And finally, the third objective is to demonstrate culturally responsive practices throughout the district. So we will give to you an update on all three of these objectives. Associated with these three objectives are four different outcomes that we will also share, uh, data with you on this evening. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Camas as he shares with you a little bit about our objectives.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery, members of the board. Pleasure to be here. I want to connect our actions to our outcomes and objectives. At the school level, our equity teams have promoted inclusivity by implementing restorative practices and fostering cultural competence among staff and students. I've, it's been great to actually see that myself. Since September, many of our schools have engaged their students, parents, and families in planning and celebrating various academic and cultural events, promoting a sense of community, belonging, and affirming the values of the various cultures in District Six. Our food pantry is focusing on establishing a school community without hunger, where everyone has access to enough food. It's been amazing to see our nutrition and school staff come together to benefit our most vulnerable students and families. I've asked Principal Ashley Aragon to share with her some insights regarding cafecitos, mother read father read programs. When I talked to her last week, she was so positive and excited, and I couldn't wait to have her come and share some of her thoughts with you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share some of the great things. Last year, we started cafecitos and it was our first year. We started off a little slower, trying to figure out what time of day is best, morning or evening, and we alternated and very quickly realized, and families told us, they need both times. So this year, we've hosted a cafecito every month. It's always the first Tuesday of the month. We host one in the morning and one in the evening to provide access to multiple, um, families who might work. And we've had a great turnout. We've got a core group who have really been there since the beginning, and they are now our leadership team. So they are helping us to plan and prepare for next year as we expand our offerings into more of what we're hearing families want and need. And then our mother read father read program was amazing. It's six weeks long, but families wanted it much longer. They enjoy being able to learn reading strategies and practice them each week alongside their students.
Thank you, Dr. Aragon. I appreciate your work. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Aragon, thank you so much. Also, um, what we're doing is providing you with more background, more context than just bullet points. We obviously know you guys can read those. We're just providing you some more information to help understand, really capture our district and the work of our teachers, staff, and administrators. So on this slide, we focus on staff data results with a goal being 75% or above on the school community, school climate survey. And just to recap, during our work session, we talked about, Dr. Dattery described and defined the panorama survey that's been going on our district for quite some time, about eight years or so. Teachers have taken this survey for the past eight years, while our operational and site-based staff has taken this for the second time this year. 94% of our K-12 teachers responded favorably, would strongly agree or agree to their school community questions. This is up 1% from last year. 73% of operations staff, district-level departments such as IT, economic achievement, which is our, our team, HR, finance, transportation, responded favorably, strongly agree or agree, which is up 2% from last year. 70% site-based staff, which includes our non-teaching staff such as paras, office staff, food service, custodial, respond strongly, agree or agree, which is up 3% from this past year. This slide demonstrates our progress towards our goal of our students' data being at 75% or higher on the classroom community section. The percentages are reflected in the answers of almost always and most of the time, as you can see. 77% of our elementary, third to fifth grade students responded favorably, which is down from four years ago, but has held steady for the past three years. 68% of our middle school students, sixth to eighth graders, responded favorably, which is up 1% over the past two years and up 8% from four years ago. 68% of our high school students, ninth grade to 12th grade students answered favorably, which is the same as last year, but up 16% from four years ago. So our next objective, as you can see, is about supporting for learning opportunities for all students with a career and college readiness. To provide some background to our board, I would like to provide some more context. We provided parents and families with concurrent enrollment informational meetings to build their understanding on our graduation pathways and academic programs offered to students at our comprehensive high school. We had over 70 families represented that evening. Providing more opportunities for our parents to understand and navigate our school system is something that we will continue next school year. We have also conducted interviews, including students of various races with two or more Fs. We have also interviewed some of their parents as well. As for District Six, Korean Technical Education Center application opens in November, closes in December before winter break, mirroring the, the open enrollment window of our district. This is similar to the open enrollment application, D6 CT Center application is based on a lottery. Our, our demographics of the CT Center matches that of our district and of our students that are doing well. As many of our school leaders and teachers learned from Standards Institute last summer, our students learn best when they are, when we know who they are as individuals, as well as their grade level, as well as expect grade level rigorous instruction for them.
And so the, the outcome data that we're looking at, and we talked about this earlier this evening as well, is in regards to our, uh, graduation, four-year graduation rates. Um, the goal is that by 2025, graduation rates will outpace the state by 5% across desegregated student groups. And as you can see, we are, uh, outperforming the state this year as we have in prior years. It's also important to note, as we look at the demographic groups of each of these four different demographic groups, first economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities, on this slide, that we have, um, we've not only outpaced the state by, um, 5% or more on both of these, we have also increased from 2020 to 2023 considerably in each of these categories, or each of these subgroups, rather. And the same holds true as we look at minority students as a, uh, desegregated group, as well as English learners, um, and that we are exceeding in both of these, uh, well, in, with English learners, over 5%, and nearly getting there with, with students who are, um, minority students as well. And again, in both of these categories, um, subgroup populations, we have continued to increase year after year, and from 2020 to 2023, have, uh, continued to increase that, uh, percent of students graduating on time in four years. So this data continues to, um, our, our students continue to do well. This data continues to be strong, and we will continue that pace. And that brings us to our third objective on demonstrate culturally responsive practices throughout the district.
So as we can see, this is our third objective. And notice that this is the practices throughout our district, meaning all of our departments. Connecting some of our actions to our culture and climate objective includes the following. These are just some of the actions. Principal Amy Zuloff and I provided training to our new teachers and staff, administrators, beginning of the school year, to be able to create space for cultures, uh, for our new, our new staff members. Also, from September to February, Director Jane Jensen, Principal Amy Zuloff and I built up the capacity of our school principals by analyzing each element of our asset-based configuration rubric, self-assessing their success and needs as individual schools. Since January of this year, our district equity team has developed cultural proficiency modules with the purpose of increasing the cultural responses, responsiveness of our staff members across all departments. Each month, our parent family advocates, along with David Reyes, our family center coordinator and I, collaborate on a monthly basis with our family advocates to help them engage our partners and partner with the families, problem solve, and learn from each other. This slide captures six through 12th grade students' response in the race and equity section. As we see, 75% of our students, grade through 12, responded favorably, meaning almost always or frequently on the diversity and inclusion questions. 47% of our students, grades six through 12, responded favorably, almost always or frequently to cultural awareness and action questions. As we thought together as a team, we decided to provide more context for our school board. What if we looked at the sometimes as well? This slide demonstrates the sometimes option. We wanted to dive deeper into our data, some more, and while we could always improve, we wanted to make sure that we thoroughly understood what our students are telling us to make, to take appropriate actions. Therefore, we looked at the sometimes, and as you can see, the student responses that include almost always, frequently, and sometimes have been consistently with one or two percentages points for four years. This is an opportunity to better serve all of our students. This slide here is about training our staff. As we can see, 90% of our staff have been trained in a culture responsive practice. We have now met this goal. This training includes new professional academies, Beyond Diversity, Building PD, about climate and culture, also, uh, race and equity that I've seen. Equify meetings, district equity team collaboration, learning about specific cultural proficiency modules, asset-based configuration, professional development, which we mentioned earlier, and Avid trainings. Although we have much to be successful, I'm so proud of our district. We, as Greeley Evans District Six, are about continuous improvement for our students, families, and staff. Each school will continue to analyze their individual data to determine their next steps as a building. Next school year, we plan to provide our parents and families with more opportunities to learn how they can partner and engage in their child's education. Collaborate with individual schools in providing specific support for implementing certain elements of our asset-based configuration framework. Some schools have already begun this, this work this school year. In the next month, our district equity team will, will have completed new cultural proficiency modules that will be used by staff throughout all departments, including operations, instructional, and non-instructional staff. Cultural proficiency board is a continuous process of learning. It is much more than accepting diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's an ongoing journey of growth, discovery, respective values, beliefs, customs, and expectations of individuals from all over the world. I'm grateful that our D6 community and school board demonstrates cultural humility, humility by, oh, being open to learning how to best serve and partner with our students and families.
Thank you, um, and we appreciate your time on this this evening, and we'll take any questions or comments you may have.
We may have a few for you, uh, tonight. Now, Dr. Campus Spitsy is first.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. Um, can you go back to the slide on, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion where, um, that one? So is, is it, is, I'm not that familiar with panorama. Is it a Likert scale? Is it zero to five?
One to five, yes.
One to five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then, so I, I would like us to be almost always and frequently. I think the inclusion of sometimes is, uh, falsely, um, inflating that percentage. Um, so just a, a personal thing, if it is a Likert scale, I think the top two tiers, um, should be looked at rather than the sometimes. I don't think that.
Absolutely. And what we wanted to share with you, what we knew we needed to do was to look at the data and do a deep dive and say, how close are we? Because that does matter. When we look at the data and panorama, panorama reports it to us exactly how you're saying. It is in the almost always or frequently that these things, that's what we really need to hit. That's the target, right? And that's what our 75% is measured on, is, are those two? Knowing that we're not there, and particularly with the cultural awareness and action, we said, ugh, is it because they're ones and twos? Or do we have some opportunity in the threes? And that's what we really noticed on the next slide. So absolutely agree with you. We are at, we want to hit that 75%. We know we, these are our students, and we need to, we need to figure that out. So we're doing a, a deeper dive into that. But we wanted to say, we're, we've got those threes that we really need to be thinking about. What else can we do that'll really support them, as well as ones and twos, of course? You know, when they're answering that. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for clarifying that that was meant to show these weren't all ones and twos, that there were more threes.
Right.
Mm-hmm, to skew that data.
We also just wanted to highlight our teachers as well, that they are talking with students sometimes, and we didn't want the board thinking that our teachers and students were never talking about race.
Are there any other questions from board members? Ms. Mash.
Thank you for the presentation. I was just curious about the classroom community, school community question. You don't have to necessarily tell me the specific question, but is that just kind of about like belonging, comfort, being, feeling comfortable, feeling seen? What, what exactly are we kind of trying to measure?
Great question. And yes, and I do want to kind of get, because we actually have some examples as to what those questions look like. Um, on classroom community, oh, so close. Oh, it's in line. Here it is. So a few questions would be, so for our students, and keep in mind, we do this at grades three through five, and then again, six, eight, and nine, 12. So for elementary age students, it's questions like, my teacher cares about me. How much does your teacher encourage you to do your best? Cause they, both of those were quite high, 90% and 81%, I might add. And then in this class, I feel like I fit in. So again, thinking about that class, community, class belonging. And I ask for help when needed, when I need it. Those are for elementary students. And then for, um, middle and, and high school students, it's, I feel like an important part of this, uh, classroom community, those kinds of questions, very similar to the, the elementary, just feeling that sense of belonging, knowing that their teacher cares about them and that they fit in. Yeah, good question.
Also, if I was looking at the dots correctly, I think we saw a huge jump from 2020 to 2021. And I just found that interesting. I was like, yeah, well, 2020, fall of 2020 was a very, you know, tenuous time, and, um, so everyone felt better the next year.
Yes. Very good noticing.
I'm not sure if there are any other questions from board members. Dr. Pilch, I'd like to ask one of you, and then you can kick that to somebody else if, if you need to, but, um, there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding about equity and what equity is and, and why we might need, uh, equity teams, uh, in our, in our school district. And so I was just wondering if you could, if you could answer that, what, how do, how do we define equity and, and what do our? do we define equity, and what do our equity teams do?
Thank you for that question, and I may ask Luis and Stacy to jump in too. So I want to say this first of all. This is Dr. Deirdre Pilch's definition of equity. It is not the district definition of equity. And so for me as a leader in this system, equity means every single student. Every single student has what they need to succeed. Every single student. So it starts there, and then I think the best explanation for equity for me really is right here in our strategic plan that you all looked at tonight again. When we look at that student learning and achievement, that we engage all students in challenging personalized education, preparing each student to be career and college ready, that is equity. So whatever that student needs to be college and career ready, that's equity work. And so the equity work is the work that occurs behind the scenes. When you look at the goals, and all four goals in student learning, achievement, and climate and culture, in my opinion, are equity work. And when you look at the objectives that are expected to come out of that, and then the outcomes that we look at to say, hey, are we doing this or not? What are those outcomes? That is the equity work that occurs behind that to ensure those outcomes. And, you know, so I could continue to read to you, but it's cultivating a safe, healthy, and inclusive learning environment for all, embracing our diversity and engaging all stakeholders. That is equity work. And that's what we do every single day in this system, and we provide personalized learning experiences, again, so all students graduate on time and are career and college ready. We implement consistent and coherent aligned curriculum assessment and instructional practices that are research-based to ensure all students learn. And then we develop cultural responsiveness throughout the organization. That's the work behind there, that's the equity work, developing that cultural responsiveness, the training that occurs with staff and students and our community. And then we support the social, emotional, and physical well-being of all students and staff. So that is my opinion, what equity work is. Equity teams are teams at each site and building that are the chief warriors of this. They are the people who think about this, worry about this, remind us, did you translate that? Did you include this group? Did you, did you look to the strategic plan to make sure meeting all the students' needs? That's what equity teams do. And, and they help to advance the professional development in our buildings with our, with our staff, our support staff, as well as with our teachers. Because as you saw tonight with our students who are here tonight, who we honor, they come to us from all walks of light. That is equity, making sure they're all ready, and that we do whatever it takes to get them ready. So with that, what'd I miss, guys?
That was amazing. That was amazing. I think what I would add, and really appreciate Dr. Stacy, you know, with her trust in me, sending me to learn more. One of the things I've learned is there's a misunderstanding of President Matthews for sure, because folks look at it without student achievement, and we need, if we want our students to achieve high, then we need to be culture efficiency and have high culture, high climate, and be, and have, have access and have equity at high levels. In other words, what I learned was cannot separate student achievement from equity. In order to be a high-achieving school, high-achieving district, your equity and culture has got to be high as well. This is coming from a man dedicated his life 40 years all over the country, talking to us and teaching us about how important this work is to get to the highest level possible, which is 100%. So the highest schools in the country have high equity, high access, high culture, high climate, and along with the high achievement and high growth.
I know, I already had a question, but I did want to end on a comment that, just applauding you guys, that 90% of staff are trained in culturally responsive practices or getting towards that goal, which is so, so important. And then, Dr. Aragon, just wanted to congratulate you on the cafecitos and being so responsive that you're offering them in the morning and in the evening, and the Mother Read, Father Read program, and how successful that's been that families are wanting more. I would hope that our district could support efforts like that for parental engagement.
I will just tack on to that, that this used to read 100%, as did some of our other staff goals, and as we got more and more analytical, we realized we're never going to be 100% because we're always hiring. So you can never be 100%. Well, I mean, you're always striving to get every single employee there, but you're never going to all be there because every single day we're hiring more people.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? I'm not seeing any. So thank you both for the presentation tonight. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, for bringing this presentation to us.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is public participation. I simply want to read this before we begin. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not engage or respond in discussion, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our board secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, not to individual board members. This board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner, cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. With that read, I do believe we have a few speakers tonight, and first tonight we have, see if I can, thank you, Nathan Gross. Welcome, Mr. Gross. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Good evening, President Matthews and board members. My name is Nathan Gross, and for the last seven years, I've been a teacher at Brentwood Middle School. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program, better known as FAMILY. It was adopted by Colorado voters in 2020, and benefits became available this year. It provides employees with 12 weeks of state-paid leave when employees are dealing with a serious health condition or the birth of a child. Private employers are required to participate in this program, but local governments were given the opportunity to opt out, which we did. Now that those benefits are becoming available, I would argue it's time to reconsider. Some in our district have argued that better options are available for our employees, but that assertion is objectively false. In contrast to the 12 weeks of paid leave offered by the FAMILY program, our district provides 12 weeks of unpaid job protection, which they're legally required to do under FMLA. In the case of spouses in the district having children, those 12 weeks are split amongst the parents. If an employee would like to be paid during their leave, they can use accrued sick leave or draw on the sick leave bank if they are a member. I'll remind you that this program is administered by the GEA and funded through the generosity of employees. It is not an employer benefit, nor is it one that's available to new fathers. Even though our district has opted out of this program, employees have the option to independently opt in. Unfortunately, our practices have made this benefit virtually impossible to use because they are not bound by the other requirements of the program. As someone personally who has opted in, I would need to take a 30% pay cut during my leave to utilize that program. While on the topic of my own situation, I want to be clear that while I intended to use that program, that's not why I'm here today. I've accrued plenty of sick leave during my employment, but I know lots of folks that are not in that situation. Starting this year, employees in Colorado have been given financial unemployment protection when working and dealing with a serious medical condition. That is, of course, unless they work for one of the few employers that have opted out. Choosing to do so sends a strong message both to current and future employees about the value or lack thereof that our district places on their families.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Your time. Next tonight, we have Ms. Maria Foster. Thank you for being here, Ms. Foster, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board, Superintendent Pilch. After watching the last school board meeting, I felt I needed to come and express my views about some of the book review process. I noticed in the last meeting, the phrase protect the children was used a lot, and I wanted to challenge what I believe is the underlying assumption of that, that the way you protect people is to remove them from things. And personally, I do not believe in general that you protect people or children by restricting their access to the world. I think rather you protect children by providing them with the tools, knowledge, and skills to critically assess the world as they encounter it. You can protect a child from drowning by saying, you can never go near a swimming pool, you can never go near a body of water. Or you can provide them with swimming lessons. And I would argue that the second is actually much more protective than the first. You can protect a child from being injured in a car accident by saying, you can never get your driver's license. Or you can do what my parents did, and said, we're going to enroll you in driver's education when that was offered through the schools, and my dad would take me out when I had my learner's permit. And I remember specifically one time him taking me to an empty icy parking lot and saying, today, you're going to learn how to drive through a skid. And we practiced skidding and sliding around that parking lot. And you know what? Many times through my life, I have been very grateful that I had that opportunity because I have skidded on black ice, I have skidded on ice. And if I hadn't had that experience in a controlled situation, I might not have reacted properly. And I look at books, that they can be that controlled situation for children of being exposed to things. So I don't think that protecting them by removing them from the book or removing them from the world is truly protecting them. I think it is doing them a disservice and preventing them from being full individuals in later in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. Welcome, Ms. Foster. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. I signed up to talk about books, but first I would like to say, yay for the buses, yay for the bus drivers. My son was a special ed student who rode what some of the kids call the handicap bus, and I used to always ask him, was that the one with the square wheels? And at the time, if you have a pickup at your house, you live by the bus schedule, and you die by the bus schedule. But he had some excellent programming, but without the buses, he would not have been able to access that and become the stunning adult that he is. Also, I volunteer with a group of kids that just went to the zoo and had a fabulous time last week, and the older kids are going to the aquarium soon. And those are such wonderful experiences for kids to have. And I know at times we've been a little short on either buses or drivers, and those things haven't always happened. What I signed up to speak about was books, and a librarian once told me something that I found really profound, and she said, books should be both a window and a mirror. They should be a window for us to look out and understand what's going on around us, and they should be a mirror that we can look in and see ourselves reflected. When my mother was pregnant with me, my oldest brother died, and they had a child with, a toddler with health problems and another toddler, and they were in no way equipped to really nurture us the way we needed to be nurtured. They had just moved and did not have a support system. And for a long time, I felt like he was my match. My first name is Francis, his name was Franklin, and in my child's mind, it's like, he was the one that was supposed to be mine. And I read a book called The Empty Room that helped address sibling loss, even when you didn't know that sibling. And, you know, 40 years into it, I kind of got some insights into my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. That concludes our public participation. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda are revisions to policy AEA standards-based education. This is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approve the revisions to policy AEA standards-based education as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'm not seeing any. Dr. Pilch, was there anything that you needed, wanted to introduce or add on this one?
President Matthews, I'll just share that this is a result of our a year ago legislative session, and here our legislators are at it again. But it's some shells to muss and adding youth representation in here, which is a good add, and so nothing substantive here.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda, revisions to policy DJ bidding procedures.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to policy DJ bidding procedures as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on this policy change? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next are revisions to G personnel policies. This is also an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six revises the G personnel policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Dr. Campus Spitsy?
I move that the motion to approve policy GBEE be amended to approve policy GBEE with the following changes. In the first paragraph, technology, which includes the internet, social media, and electronic communications, and there's a parenthetical, I move that we change from have a vast potential to support curriculum to just have potential to support curriculum and learning. And in the second sentence, where it currently reads, the Board of Education believes they should be used in schools as a learning resource to educate and to inform, I move that we change that to the Board of Education believes that they may be used in schools as a learning resource to educate and to inform.
Okay, so we would remove the word vast and change, change to may.
Should to may.
Should to may. Okay, is there a section, a second?
A second.
For this amendment? Okay, there's been a motion to amend and a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment that Dr. Campus Spitsy is proposing? Ms. Mash?
I would just also lend my support to these minor changes. I think that the district does an excellent job of using technology judiciously with caution, with, also with the full trust in our teachers to use the tools that are available to them in, in an excellent manner. I think we're just, I think that maybe Dr. Campus Spitsy would like to just use a little bit less of strong language, I guess, with that vast and may. Also, the Board of Education believes they should be used in schools, kind of feels like, well, if you're not using social media, you better start right now. So just that that is a tool available. So I'll be, I'll be voting yes on that amendment.
Any other comments, questions, discussion on the amendment? I'm not seeing any, so we will be voting on the amendment. All right, will you give us a vote, Ms. Lemon?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
President Matthews, we'll take that back to the committee as an approved board policy, and we'll, we'll share the comments with the committee as well.
Okay, and we'll need to vote on the, on the motion now. Is there any, is there any discussion on the motion with the amendments? Dr. Spitsy has proposed, and we have accepted. I'm not seeing any, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote on the, on the new motion?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda are revisions to policy JS student use of the internet and electronic communications. This is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to policy JS student use of the internet and electronic communications as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion, questions on this policy change? Set of policy changes? I'm not seeing any, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, that is all the business that we have tonight. Thank you for joining us. This meeting is adjourned.